Call the meeting of the North Syracuse Board of Education to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin with a moment of silence for the following. Rita Mako, a retiree from the North Syracuse Central School District. Our Terry Noble, a retiree, a former employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Christie Dorsey, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Very difficult. I'm getting old and my friends are leaving. Rita Mako, God bless Rita. She started at Bessie Reardon, which if some of you don't know where that is, it's on Malloy Road. And she was a teacher there for many years. Then the Board of Education closed that school and she went to then the Bear Road Elementary School. And Mr. Crabtree left Main Street when that closed and went to Bear Road. And we were partners for 13 years. We were grade level partners. And Rita said, Bob, you want to take a trip to Albany on train with all our 60 fourth graders? And I said, sure, let's do it. Well, that wasn't interesting. But every year for at least 10 years, our fourth graders got to see the history of New York State in true life, to go to the museum, which if you have not been to the Albany Museum, Historical Museum, children learned everything about history. And then that time, Michael Bregman was Majority Leader, living in our district. And he would take the kids to the Assembly Hall, just fantastic. So I'll never forget Rita. I didn't know what I was getting into. You know, we had a lot of parents go. But it was what teachers do now is teach them what's happening outside in the world. And I want to thank Rita for doing that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We're going to begin with the presentation. We have a presentation for the 21st Century Community Grant. So I'm going to turn it over to our presenters.
I'll start by introducing ourselves. I'm Christopher Lay, the Associate Superintendent.
Hi, good evening. Lisa Goldberg, Director of Social Emotional Learning and Social Studies.
Good evening. My name is Chow Lee and the Program Supervisor/Grant Director.
Okay, so we're going to walk you through the inception of this grant and our launch timeline and the way it's going to be developed and implemented over the next five years. We thought this was important for you to understand it as we're moving quickly in the next few weeks as we approach the school year with a launch in October. First thing is we wanted to provide a snapshot of Rox Road Elementary and Roxborough Road Middle Schools. Lisa and I are kind of uniquely positioned because Lisa is on Roxelle's BPT and I'm on Rox Middle's BPT. And we wanted to create a, provide a snapshot of some important data that we're aware of and some concerns and challenges that we're seeing at both schools.
So as you can see, both Roxes, but I'll speak specifically about the elementary school, has a high rate of poverty and chronic absenteeism. Ironically, prior to the pandemic hitting, the school made tremendous strides. It is a school in need of improvement and comprehensive school in need of improvement, a CSI school. And it made tremendous strides in terms of absenteeism and especially made extraordinary advances in math. They, this year, they've made some advances in ELA and significant gains in math. And so they're really a prime candidate for what you'll see the 21st Century Grant can provide.
Okay, and very similar at Rox Middle School, we've seen challenges with chronic absenteeism. We have about a 57% of our students are eligible for free and reduced lunch. It is a target school in need of improvement. So we're working, creating a plan to support students, identify some of our needs. One of the most interesting pieces of data and most concerning for me is student participation extracurriculars and athletics. Only 32% of Roxborough Road Middle School students participated extracurricular activities and athletics in the 21-22 school year, while 81% of their Gillette Road Middle School peers did so in the same year. And that's one of the reasons why we really value this grant, because this grant does provide a lot of enrichment activities and opportunities for students to receive support in areas that they might not be able to otherwise. And we see a very similar pattern where kids have made some gains in ELA and real significant gains in math. So we're moving things forward. Things are coming together. And when we received notice of this grant being awarded to the North Syracuse Central Schools, we were more than thrilled because we kind of think this is the missing piece that we've been waiting for. This quote, as simple as it is, really highlights what this grant is about and what these opportunities about. Educational equity means each child receives what he or she needs to develop his or her full academic and social potential. And this grant is really designed to give everybody additional support, resources and time in schools with great faculty members, teachers and other partnering agencies to support them as they move forward.
This campus is unique in a lot of ways, but is really indicative of posing an opportunity for us to do something really extraordinary. And that is really the philosophy and the vision of a community schools model. When we talk about community schools, we're essentially talking about the heart and the hub of the community, that the school is literally the beating heart of the community. And it becomes the place where resources are housed. And we really build the bridge between the academic and school community and the life of the community, the families. And we really leverage the resources and assets of the community. And you'll see in the community schools model, there are four pillars. One is integrated student supports and restorative practices. Next, expanded and enriched learning time and opportunities founded upon cultural relevance and ethnic studies. Now, really put a pin in that one when we come back and talk about 21st century, family and community engagement. And lastly, collaborative leadership and practices, the idea that we are working together in service to our students and families. So as you know, we have been, I think, really forward thinking in terms of having two restorative campus, two restorative practice specialists on the Rox campus. We have one at each building. And they have been integral this year in terms of addressing student behavioral needs, discipline issues, and really developing the basis for a lot of our tier one classroom practices and building community. I think they were integral in terms of re-socializing and helping kids re-enter school after the pandemic. Both staffs have been trained in restorative practices. And at the middle school, every fifth and sixth grader, every fourth day, like a special, has restorative. And that is led by Jordan Brienzey, the restorative practice specialist on the Rox Middle Campus. And she starts with, every session is a circle and kids really form a very tight community. And all of the adults that interact with fourth and fifth grader, sorry, fifth and sixth graders in those circles has been trained. And so it's pretty wonderful. They have had some experiences with restorative consequences for discipline issues and have really begun to institute restorative re-entry conferences. So if there is something so egregious that a student has to be suspended, they are reintegrated with a restorative conference so that it's really about how do we heal the hurt, repair the damage and harm and move forward. I was really fortunate. Through the winter and spring, there were several listening sessions for students who had had some discipline issues and then circles for their parents. And I was able to listen to students talk about their experience and also listen to parents. It was one of the most powerful things of my career. And I think we're really laying the foundation for a much more engaged and vibrant connection with the community.
The second pillar is expanded instructional support. We've been working towards this over the last few years. This year, New York State Ed Department has made an enhanced instructional coaching grant available for Rox Elementary because it's a CSI school. So we'll have an instructional coach dedicated just to that school on grounds, five days a week. Prioritize AAF staffing at Roxelle and Rox Middle School. Greg and Nick have done a nice job really looking closely and see how we can best support our students. Professional learning communities at Roxelle and Roxborough Road Middle School as well. One of the things that we believe is a game changer, we're really interested in seeing how this will, you know, prove to be helpful and supportive of the community, is last year we worked with the YMCA and Cheryl Walker and some of the other folks there and getting a UPK program housed in Rox Elementary. So before children can start, even start elementary school at Roxelle, they can actually do full day UPK in Roxelle to become acclimated with their school environment, which is wonderful. Because we didn't have up to that point any UPK programming available on the southern end of our district. Geographically, we had Westminster, we had Learn As You Grow, and we've been continuing to expand it geographically to make sure it's accessible to all members of our stakeholder community. Mr. Stone will speak a little bit further to that when he does his presentation tonight. School Improvement Grant supports family math and ELA nights at Roxelle, as well as after-school math camp at Roxelle in both the fall and the spring. So we're trying to continue to bring more instructional support to the campus, to the community, to meet our students' needs.
We also had the foresight to hire two family engagement specialists, one at each school on the Rox campus. And they have been instrumental in helping families to connect with resources. So whether this is food in the form of snack packs and actually meals that go home, whether it's assistance with clothing, holiday meals and gifts. There was even a program to provide families who could not afford to provide birthday parties and birthday gifts for students, to provide them with birthday boxes. They are connecting families with all kinds of support services, everything from financial education to how to fill out forms, to how to get your child into after-school program. They have been just remarkable. Increasingly, as the world has opened up again, they brought back a lot of family events. So they started movie night. They started a meet your teacher night, which is going to be expanded this year. And I'm happy to report, there's a school presence at Matty Dale Market. This past Wednesday, we partnered with transportation and had a bus at the market so that kids could see the bus and get on the bus and learn how to sit on the bus. And it was, I had to say, it was super exciting to be there. So again, really bridging the homeschool connection.
And finally, the fourth pillar of this community schools model is collaborative leadership and just partnerships that we have with people who really touch the students. So as Chris had mentioned, we have a UPK partnership with the YMCA. We are also partnering with the YMCA, Coordinate Community Services Incorporated and Contact Community Services to provide services to our students for this program. And with Restorative Practices International Institute, they're doing a lot of training for our staff so that we can better support our students. And then we have a professional learning community with the Solution Tree. So really, we're trying to create an environment where, you know, we're tapping into the assets of so many people that, you know, touch our child here in the Roxbury campus. All right, so Anita M. Lawie, she is a Congresswoman from New York, yay, New York. Established the Community Learning Centers Grant probably over 20 years ago. This is the only key federal funding source for, you know, after-school and summer programming. So we're really fortunate to get $942,078 annually for the next five years to provide programming for about 567 students on the Rox campus. And so kind of the main goals of this program is to help students academically, especially around reading and math. Really, we want to provide programming that really supports what they're doing in school, you know, during the out-of-school time and provide other services to really help the students and their families. So we're very excited for this opportunity. The next slide. So there are three main things that we're going to be offering in this program. We came up with a tentative name, which I hope you'll like, but it hasn't been broadcasted yet. But the Rising Rock Stars Program. Isn't that so awesome? Yeah. So, but I'm going to float it around with the students and the staff and the parents to make sure that everybody's on board with this name. But basically, we're going to provide academics support, enrichment, recreational activities and services to parents and students. So with the academic support, it's really to help them to understand what they're learning in the classroom during the school day. So if they're struggling in an area, they're not quite sure. Every day, Monday through Friday, will be the first hour of the program. The after-school program will be tutoring and academic support. So they get tutoring from a certified teacher and they can also get tutoring from, you know, kind of students. If we can get some high school students or other peers of theirs in the class that are doing well. And also, we're going to offer fun stuff because kids want to come and do something fun after school. They spend a long day during school. So we'll offer like, you know, sports and dance and, you know, arts and crafts or science stuff, anything that the kids are really interested in. So I've already sent out some surveys to some of the students and the parents have been surveyed and the staff have been surveyed. And during the back-to-school night on August 31st on the Rox campus, we're going to do more surveying of students. And also, we're going to partner with Contact Community Services and CCSI to have two additional staff. One is a Promise Zone Specialist and the other one is a Youth Development Specialist. And basically, their role is to really support the social emotional, you know, learning and well-being of our students. So, you know, during the after-school time, if a teacher's having a hard time with one kid, we can pull in one of these extra folks just to like, support them. And there's going to be a lot of coordination between, you know, the regular school staff, what the teachers know about the kids, so they can relay information to the after-school class so the kids aren't confused and the adults aren't confused. And also, we're providing programming to parents and families. So in terms of the core academic support, so tutoring, like I said, they'll have opportunities for kids to do individualized lessons, whether, you know, on a computer or in a small group or one-to-one tutoring. And also, we'll do projects around project-based learning so it can really connect what they're learning, you know, academically with like, real hands-on work. The kids will learn how to set goals or really meet their academic and whatever personal goals they have. And then we'll have extra support. So we'll have special education teachers and English language teachers, you know, in the after-school program to support the students. I just need a little extra. And we're hoping that for, this program is open to all students in the Rox campus. But we really want to target the students that are, you know, struggling a little bit more or they don't have anything, you know, to do after school. So we're going to make an active effort to like, recruit those folks. So here's all the fun stuff that the kids get to do. So we'll survey the students to see, you know, is karate a thing or they want basketball? I should say that at both schools, especially at Rox Middle, they already have some stuff happening after school. So we'll be able to like, integrate and fold in what they're doing. Like one of the PE teachers, you know, Jill Millias, yeah, she does like intramural sports. So we'll be able to expand it so we can have more kids do that. And then the YMCA is going to be involved. We have 10 teachers that we're going to hire from the YMCA to provide all these really fun academically enriching recreational activities for our students. And the students will get choices because it's a three-hour time period. So at Roxelle, we're going to offer Rising Stars, Rock Stars from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and then after-school from 3:45 to 5:45, and at the middle school from 2:45 to 5:45. And everybody will get transportation, will get snacks because that's very important because it's a long day for the kids. The next slide. And we also know that, you know, if we want to really support the students, we have to support their parents and, you know, their caregivers. So we'll have different activities that the parents could do with their kids. We'll also have special workshops that parents want, let's say, they want to learn how to, you know, support their kids better with homework in terms of math or anything they want. And so our partner agencies will be able to do that in addition to the staff that we have on site. So here's the timeline. So we're aiming for a launch of the kids, you know, being in the after-school programs on the week of October 24th. And so actually, this Wednesday and next Wednesday, we're having a focus group. So we have three or four focus groups each of those days with parents from Roxelle or Rox Middle and just to find out what they want, you know, from this program, what would they be interested in, what their students are interested in. And we are also kind of trying to hire site coordinators. So these site coordinators, one at each school, will really help the teachers around the logistics if the teachers sign up, you know, to do extra programming. You know, we can help them like, order supplies, make copies out of the room or whatever they need. Because students are, the teachers are really overwhelmed, you know, after a long day. So they'll have extra support. And these, the Youth Development Specialists and the Promise Zone Specialists, they'll also be extra adults to help support the kids. And then, you know, in September, we want to have a kickoff meeting, an advisory, because that's part of the grant. And we want representatives from each of the schools, parents, students, staff, and, you know, us to really advise us because we want to really build something that, you know, the students really want to come to. And we're hoping to make such an exciting, you know, Rising Rock Stars program that the kids will want to come to school because if they don't come to school, then they can't do the after-school programming. So we're going to make the after-school programming like, as an incentive. And as you saw, you know, both schools have problems with, you know, absenteeism. So hopefully, this will provide somewhat of a solution to that. And we're going to offer the programming in chunks, you know, for like, anywhere between four to seven weeks at a time. And then we'll also offer, you know, four weeks of summer programming from nine to 12, Monday through Friday. And during the school breaks, we'll offer like, you know, one or two activities here for the students and their families, just a chance to, you know, get them connected and do something fun for the kids who don't have, you know, too much planned during the school breaks. So that is it.
Does anybody have any questions for us?
I do. Hello.
Hi.
You mentioned transportation. And I also, so it sounds like that's been covered. You can get with these extended hours. And you mentioned that for teachers, are they covering?
Yeah, they're getting paid.
Extended hours.
For their hours. So our teachers are getting. Yep. And so we have, we built in pay for the certified teachers, as well as teachers aid. We have built-in time for the family engagement specialists or any staff that are working extra beyond their contract will get compensated.
Fantastic. And I saw with the middle school, of course, we have a lot of single-parent homes. And I see that 2:45 to 3:45, which of course won't be doable at all.
No, no, 2:45 to 5:45.
Obviously. It said elementary and then the middle school was just 2:45 to 3:45. Was that just a typo that it's also?
Yeah. The whole program goes to 5:45. Sorry about that.
No, no worries. Yeah, like, wait a minute, they're not going to be able to stop in the middle of the day. They need that income. So no, this is fantastic program. It seems like I kept looking for, okay, well, where might there not be a spot that you didn't cover? And it seems like you've got everything from the social work to the programs.
We'll have a school nurse on site during after-school hours in case, you know, some kid has some medical emergency that we can't handle.
And I know with the social work, you know, all hands on deck, there's everything that's happened over the last two, three years. The kids are really suffering. So the parents and the teachers. So as far as a teacher stepping up to say, hey, we really need to call this service for the parents. That's the training has occurred to make sure that that happens.
You really covered everything.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And just of all the conversations I've had with teachers and staff, other staff, like, people are really dying for something like this. And so I'm so pleased that the school district can offer something new and exciting. You know, this will be like the first kind of full, full year of like, in-person learning. And so, and the kids will get excited. So I can't wait till like, the back-to-school barbecue on the 31st. Be like, yeah. So any other questions?
I have a comment. Go ahead. I have a few.
Well, you know me. Where have you been hiding?
In Mexico. I moved here to New York.
Is this your first year with us?
This is my first month.
I said, I haven't recognized the name and Dan Bowles will tell you, I know everybody. So I am so happy about this. I mean, Terry's gleaming from ear to ear for this community. John Corolla came, probably my first time on the school board, and he talked about poverty. And we're not going to go anywhere with test scores or anything until we look at that problem. And this is looking at this problem. Also, I want to say that Matt Matola has been a phenomenal principal down there. He's done wonders the three or four years he's been down there. Rox Elementary, not just because your wife works there, is one of my favorite schools in the whole world. Because the staff in that building, and Dan knows because he was principal there, give it all. And I have nothing to say about Allen Road or Sisro where I taught or anything. But I, when I go down there, I see them work so very hard with these students, and this is going to help. Peer tutoring, I know they've done that in the past with Rox Middle. Kids have come out when I was down there, you know, spying. No, I'm kidding. There would be fifth and sixth graders that come over. Is this something you're looking at? Or is it going to be like the fourth graders?
They may not know exactly what happened before. And it used to be seventh graders from Rox Middle. And usually, if they were kind of in good standing, honor roll students. And then Joan Kessler, the guidance counselor, would look if they had a spot in their schedule and we would have them come over at that time.
Yeah, so we'll invite the students to give us some feedback on like, what kind of programming they want. Does he want to offer something that they really are excited about? If they're excited about peer tutoring, let's do it.
Yeah. Peer tutoring is very strong. It has. And I know we're going to be seeing Mr. Stone give a presentation, but the math scores went up at Roxelle. Well, they went up in a lot of schools. And I think that has a lot to do with that math camp. They started that, I think, last year. And you can see how that helped the scores. Another key group in that building is the parent groups. Whenever they had a Friday morning program at that school, they had more participation, and you would be surprised with this, than any of the other schools, Bear Road, Smith Road. And so I know you're going to develop some things for the parent.
Yeah, meeting with the PTG at Roxelle.
You've got a good president and treasurer there. So. And then the other thing I truly love is the project-based learning. It's big in Bosse's. A lot of our students in the secondary level have struggled at CNS. When they come to Bosse's, project-based learning is the key. All our teachers are, they have to be trained in project-based learning and their region scores go up. I am so excited about this program. And if you, oh, another thing I wanted to bring out is that Linda Stubbs was the advisor for our Optimist Club down there. We had an Optimist Club after school, 2:45 to whatever it was. They had transportation because of COVID, but she would love to come down and start this club because it's optimism.
Yeah.
You know, so she used to meet with the principal with this, but I think maybe meeting with you people would be great. I am excited. I can't wait to go down and visit their school.
Well, make sure you recruit the students to come sign up and have their parents sign them up. Because we have hit a goal of 567 students at both campuses, about.
Just tell me what you want me to do.
Thank you.
This is awesome. I mean, Lisa, you know, every time we talk. This is awesome. I mean, I, Lisa, you know, every time we talk about this, I I go crazy because you know, I absolutely love the community schools model. We're so fortunate to have a district of our size be in three separate communities with Salina Clay and Cicero. And all three have so many different options to offer us that we can partner with and bring in opportunities for these students. It really hits me with with pillar three. So many people in the community don't realize just how much our staff does for students and their family. They just don't know. You know, when they see us as a school, they, kids go to school, they learn, they go home. Well, we do so much more and it's when you see it all laid out, I mean, it's it's mind blowing. It really is. And I'm so glad that we're able to start sharing that out with the community. And I hope we we bring more awareness with that. And to go off Bob's point with poverty down at that that end of the district, we also have the increase in the LL population. So you're you're just layer after layer of obstacles that we have to get through to make sure that we reach these kids, these families and 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 help integrate them and make them feel welcome, not only in school, but in our communities. The restorative practice stuff. We are so far ahead. I know every district is at a different place with this. I am so proud of where we are with this. It's working. We have a long way to go with the social emotional learning. The pandemic set us back. I mean, it was me years before we get back to to a normal cohort of students coming through, but I am so proud of the work that you guys have done to get us to where we are here. I can't be any happier with the grant and I can't wait to see the success this is going to bring. So thank you all.
Hi, I'm the new guy, but this is amazing. I just wanted to say, I know the high school has a club with kids that want to be teachers. So maybe, I don't know, maybe you could utilize those guys in some way. Just a thought.
They're going to have a Big Brothers, Big Sisters program. So we're going to have folded it up to this. So the things that they're already doing, we're just going to repackage it and call it the Rock, Rising Rock Stars Program. Yeah.
So Mrs. Agrew, I was going to follow up with what Bob said. You're 100% correct. You could look at the Family and Consumer Science Department. We used to have them twice a month come down. So they have early education class, people that are studying to go into early education and a bus would be provided. And they would come down to Rocks and do tutoring for first and second grade. So that also can be rebranded, repackaged. They would probably be interested in also look into the Junior High Honor Society with Connie Teros. Those students would also come down to Rocks and do tutoring. So we had a a cycle of students coming over to provide help.
I just have a comment. First of all, thank you. Great job. And I I'm curious. Okay, so Roxborough seems to be the only schools in the district that are eligible, meet the criteria for this grant. How did we come across this grant and like?
So I've learned both with Dan and Chris and Greg too. When I get an email, I'll share it with them and my first line is, don't say no yet. And so I went to Chris and I said, there's this opportunity for this grant. And it's if the timeline was like very short and it was going to drop at any time. And we were really fortunate to be able to work with Bosse's grant writer. And it was a team effort. Chris was worked tirelessly, Donna Marie with the data. It was, it was just incredible. And both Gretchen Belanger and Matt Matala were on board and provided whatever was needed for the grant. Our community partners in a second were like, whatever do you need? And Chris did something that was really smart. He tapped into them early and often to get some feedback and insight, but said, we really want to, as a system, oversee this grant. So that it's our agenda, not that our partners aren't great and have great agendas, but this is really, we know our kids best and we know what they need. And so it was a team effort. It was a lot of deadlines, but you know, I I got an email of federal grants that we're going to drop and I thought, why not? If we don't, if we don't try, we won't know. And as you probably know, I don't think anybody in our county got this.
The 21st century grant is probably one of the harder grants to obtain and you usually need a grant writer or somebody that knows kind of the ins and outs. We, you, you need a partner to usually get the 21st century grant and usually they try to target inner cities, big five countywide schools, especially like South. Contact Community Services, probably about seven or eight years ago, wrote a 21st century grant with us as their partner. And that went for about three or four years. And then it didn't, we, we didn't, we weren't able to get in again after that. We fell short or when the grant was written, we fell short of a metric. But the 21st century grant has a lot of money because they want to make sure there's success. And they will put programs and put the dollars, but you have to meet all the, all the criteria. And so they are trying to make sure you're providing what your community needs and also the staffing. So it allows to have a coordinator such as Chow to be able to assist us because in other, you, you really would struggle to try to do it without someone like Chow. And she's been amazing and she's worked in other systems. So we are just so blessed.
That's great.
Yeah. And if we're successful, so we are working closely with an evaluator because the feds have very, you know, really detailed timelines and detailed benchmarks that we have to meet. And if we're successful, we, this grant gets renewed. So I've, you know, got a chance to go to a conference for this 21st century grant and you know, the, the programs that do well, we get repeat funding, which will be really amazing because after five years, there's a lot of success and also we don't offer anymore. It's not going to be good. And hopefully by that time we'll find like, you know, school budget money to support this program.
Mr. Thor, any other question?
Yes, I think it's fantastic that we're able to offer UPK at this school. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe we have two classrooms dedicated to it. Do we know what those classrooms at capacity?
I believe they were pretty close last year. If I think my one student short, there was a little bit of fluidity with kids coming and going. I think Mr. Stone's going to do a presentation to you, let you know where we are with that for next year. But there was, they were pretty close, if not at capacity for the the school year is my understanding. It was well attended, well received. And we also provided transportation too. And again, that was part of a larger effort to say, we need to reinvest in the southern end of our district to make sure that people have the same access to they do in the other areas of the district.
And and if I could just say one thing, I think, you know, Chris read that quote about equity and there was that stat about the number of our students on the Rocks campus who are an extracurricular versus the Gillette campus. This will really help families provide that lacrosse team, soccer team, dance experience that if you had to pay out of pocket, it's untenable for most families. And so you know, that that will make our our varsity teams all the richer because we'll have a cross section of students from across our system.
I actually do have one other thing that I was going to save for board comments, but it ties into this so well. I think it's worth saying. Many know that I'm a member of MDRT, Million Dollar Roundtable. I'm allowed to sponsor one grant every other year. I spoke with Stephen Ritz with Green Bronx Machine. And I'm going to sponsor that grant for him. And he said, if whatever he's awarded, he wants to send back to the Syracuse area. Yeah. So, and he said Syracuse in general. So I'm going to try to see if I can't coax him to North Syracuse to put that money in because of course the urban schools are in somewhat of a more dire need, but he, we are friends. So, and I'm sponsoring the grant. So I might have some leeway there and it could be a thousand dollars. It could be $75,000. We depend, a committee makes a decision. But I wanted you to know that this is the hydroponic plants, the towers. There is a program that goes with it and he's willing to direct that money and I believe get other people involved to help.
I can see a little STEM project based learning field trip for the students and the families to get to see this plant and and do a curriculum around. That'd be awesome.
I would say, reach out to me so that I can get you in touch with Stephen. So maybe he can word it in the way that he wants to help.
Okay, good.
Syracuse.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I just had a couple. I don't even know if they're questions. The the labels you use, they're federal. We have labels, CINNY or not CINNY. Did it used to be CINNY, the CSI? I used to know my acronym.
School in Need of Improvement. So that's a, that's a state ed indicator for school.
Okay.
And then you have TSI.
Well, but it's federal, correct? Because it's based on.
Designations, yes. And that's New York State. They classify those schools based on federal.
Okay. So it's a New York State classification. Are those required to qualify for the grant? Are we just?
No, they certainly strengthen your application for the grant. And that's one of the reasons why we do think that we did receive a grant in very few districts, particularly suburban districts. It did. I don't know any in New York State that did. It's usually schools of very high poverty, inner city, some rural, a few rural schools as well.
Okay, so that, this is just a comment. I mean, I'm still staggering that statistic that that Lisa just referenced that you mentioned earlier over the participation rate and extracurricular activities. I'm staring at it now and I still can't believe the difference between the two middle schools. I I just, it's unbelievable. That I didn't know that or we didn't, maybe we did. With regards to, I just was looking at, I'm trying to get my head around community schools. It's something I've heard about. I'm wondering how how deep can you go with regards to the wellness pieces with families as far as his education? I see a lot of educational pieces directing them towards access. I guess we fall short of providing access, but is it, is that done in some places?
So are you talking about access services?
Yeah.
We have them.
We do.
We have them. Yes, we have them in a robust way. In, I think it's nine of our, seven of our schools, eight of our schools, and I, we have access light. Because I just kept nudging them like, can't you help us a little bit? So we do in three schools, we have access light that I, I think community schools, the, the sky is really the limit, but I think this year what we're really aiming to do is quarterly have an event or a either online or in person. We're going to play around and see maybe one quarter, it'll be online, the next it'll be an in person event. It'll really be tied to where we are in terms of COVID, to be quite frank. But everything from mental health issues to executive functioning. How do you set a bedtime? How do you get up in the morning? How do you create routines? What happens when your child does something that you think is wrong and would like to correct that behavior? What are some good ways to do that? One of the things that, things that we talked about is digital citizenship. And how do we, one of the surveys that came back from Rocks L, I believe, and was a real need to have some support around bullying, bullying prevention. And we were looking at it with our DCEP. And so how do we deal specifically with cyberbullying? And I don't think this is something we just direct at kids. I think we have to work with parents on, on what's responsible technology use so that they can set limits for their kids. So I think, I think we have a tremendous opportunity with our family engagement specialists and also with Kristen Stanton, who is our Mental Health and Wellness District Coordinator to really do some robust programming for our families.
Well, thank you.
In 1990, Conchada Catalano wrote a book about the history of Mattie Dell. And I don't know if it's in the library. But Mattie Dell in this community is, wasn't what it is today. And, you know, a lot of the Wizard of Oz is out of, of Mattie Dell and you might want to get that book. I do feel the kids need to know the history of their community and it's not just Northern Lights and whatever. There's a lot to the history. I, I try to look for that book for you and I can't find it, but Mr. Matty and the farms that were there. I, I think that would be great for the kids to learn about their. I, I don't know where that book is. I feel bad.
It was 1990. It was the last project before it created.
And Bob, you know that, sorry, that you know that there's a bit of a small museum in the Kruger Funeral Home of the Wizard of Oz. Memorabilia, books, all that stuff. And I'm certain if you reach out to Howard that he'll do a field trip for that. He'll invite the founding member of, or the current president of the L Frank Baum Society, because that property is L Frank Baum property. Where my office is in the funeral.
You've got new ideas for program. It's very exciting. Thank you so much.
One question, listening to what you want to do quarterly. Has anyone looked into the possibility of us hosting a TEDx event?
On what topic?
Whatever we want. When, when, when a community decides to host a TEDx event, it's, it's community run.
Point of information. That's what Robert Stroh will say. I'm familiar with TED Talks.
So it is a TED Talk, but it's, it is a, a local TED Talk that is organized by a community. And I, I mean, if we were able to get speakers or people come in and build our own program around that and open it up to the community, we have we have an auditorium next door that can house 2,000 people. I mean, this is, I've wanted to do one for years. I just didn't know the right avenue to go about doing it, but with what you guys are doing, this fits right into that. So I think that would just be awesome.
And maybe it could be on community and the importance of community and what.
Like I said, this is the type of thing that you can, you can construct yourself. So.
Thank you. Look forward to hearing how this goes later in the year. I'm not asking you to put together another PowerPoint just to I'd love to hear update down the way down the road after you have some. Well, welcome to the Northeast. Okay, thank you. Our next presentation will be on UPK and the K through four AIS and K12 ELA. From Mr. Stone.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. That is going to be a really tough act to follow. They did a great job though. And there, there's a lot of connections with what I'm going to present this evening. So again, thank you for this opportunity to present to you tonight. My name is Greg Stone. I'm the Director of ELA and Elementary Education for North Syracuse. I'm going to be presenting on three topics tonight, UPK, K4 AIS and K12 ELA. What's that? All right, there we go. Thanks. Okay. So talking about UPK or universal pre kindergarten, starting with the funding here. You can see that we've had a seven and a half percent increase in our funding for this school year, which is great. And I'm going to talk a little bit about how that impacts our students directly. When you're looking at the funding in general, 35% of the funding that we get comes from the state and this, the other 65 comes from federal. For this school year, that seven and a half percent overall increase is exclusively from the federal side. We did not get a state increase. So that's a pretty significant funding increase from, from one side of that equation. So I'm going to first walk you through this past year enrollment and what it looked like and kind of give you an overview of UPK. And then I'll show you how we've shifted for this upcoming school year. So right now you're looking at last year data in blue and this was. right now you're looking at last year data in blue and this was, was as of October, I'm sorry, August 12th of 2021. So you can see last year at this, around this time last year, we had 43 students signed up for our half-day programs. Those are in multiple different programs, which I'll talk about. We had 190 that were signed up for full day program. And we had 30 on the waitlist. And I'll explain the waitlist and how that all works in a couple of minutes.
Greg, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
I'm not sure if the board realizes, but UPK, the dollars and the number of students had been capped for probably at least almost 15, at least 15 years. So when I look, it's about 233 students and our cohorts used to be at least 600 or 600 or more of students entering kindergarten. So it was barely a third of the number of students that we have in a cohort were, were able to be in a UPK program. So as, as they continue in as what Chris was referencing, there were students at different parts of the district that did not have access to a quality pre-K program.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. And I just took over UPK probably four to five months ago, so I'm still learning a lot of this. So I learn a lot from Dan and Chris on, on, on this, this area. So again, talking about last school year, we had four areas. And we talked a little bit about one of them, but, but we had four locations where our students would go to for UPK. So Northminster Presbyterian Church, we had two Learn As You Grow sites, the one up on Elta Drive, and there's one on South Bay. And then last year we added in the YMCA program at Roxborough Road Elementary, which was referenced a little earlier by, by Chris. And that was the opportunity to expand to our southern area. And that program is, is full for this upcoming school year too. I know that question has come up. We are now waitlisted at that school as well. So looking forward to how we made some adjustments. We had some increased funding. We had the ability to, to reallocate some, some seats and everything else. And happy to say we're, we've increased our enrollment significantly. So you can see as of August 5th of just a couple of days ago, we only had nine students in our half-day seats in our half-day program. We don't know why there's a significant decrease. It could be related to COVID. We're unsure. We'll, we'll probably dig into that as we go. So we've had 80% reduction of interest there. However, more importantly, we've had a huge increase in our full-day program. We went from 190 up to 283 seats. They are all completely full, which is a 50% increase, which again is, is great for our district. We're getting much closer to including more and more of our students in these programs. And currently, right now, there's 19 students that are sitting on the waitlist, which is a reduction of 40% directly related to our increase of seats that we've increased on. We've been able to meet that need in the community. The other big announcement this year is that we've actually expanded now to five locations. And again, now we've added in the North Syracuse Early Education Program. So that school is unique in its funding sources. It gets funding from different areas. And so that was a really logistical challenge for us to bring in the UPK funding, but we're happy to report we're able to offer full-day seats there and our half-day seats will be at the North Syracuse Early Education Program. And we hope to be able to continue that partnership and expand on that program, thus meeting more needs of our community. So talking a little bit more about what UPK looks like and the partnership we have with North Syracuse School District. So for those of you that aren't aware, the way it works is we have attendance zones. So depending on where you live in relation to those five area programs, that would be your assigned school based on where your, where your location is of your house. The applications were due, don't quote me on this. I think it was around May 25th. So anyone in the district, we blasted out a lot of information. This is a free program to any, any district resident. Obviously, there's a lot of interest in this program. And so therefore we have to do a lottery selection. So once deadline, the deadline is met of turning in your applications, we then kind of hold from that point. We still collect applications, but we then institute a lottery system based on your location in order to keep it fair for everyone. So basically numbers are assigned to every single student and then the, there's a lottery drawing and that's then a ranking of who is accepted into the different schools and the different programs.
Just as a clarification, years ago when it first started, there was a priority based on income. That is no longer, that's why there is a lottery system. So you're not allowed to do it the other way that we used to. That was a change.
See, I'm learning as we go here. Thanks, Dan.
Follow up on the lottery?
Yeah.
Do we ever run into a situation where there are siblings that both are eligible for the UPK program?
Yes, but I don't know, because Chris or Dan speak to the sibling piece. I'm not quite sure.
So they would both be, they would, so they would go together. Okay.
Thank you, Chris. Next piece is transportation. This is, this is a big deal that our district does provide transportation for almost all of the programs. Every program other than North Syracuse Early Education Program, and that is something we're still working with that school on. The reason we're not able to provide transportation there is really about the start times of that program. The start and end time are different from the other elementary schools. And our UPK students ride the buses with our elementary students. They go to a school, then they transfer to a UPK bus. And so it's a very efficient model. Right now, North Syracuse Early Education Program, we couldn't get that to work, but it's something we're still working toward in the future and will continue those conversations. What's really important about these programs, and I get, I get the pleasure of getting to tour them multiple times across the school year, and it is amazing to watch what happens in a UPK program. But most importantly, our students coming in are getting a full school experience. These, these, these programs look very much like a kindergarten setting. When you look in the classrooms and you listen to the teachers, there's instruction going on. Our students are learning classroom routines, what that looks like, how to line up, how to wash your hands, how to walk in the hallway, how to follow directions. There's a ton of, of intense focus on social skills and building relationships that are appropriate, age-appropriate, dealing with conflict. There is literacy and numeracy that happens there. There's direct instruction around the foundational elements of literacy and, and math skills. And like I said, the school routines and expectations are really important. So we know, our data will even demonstrate students who attended a UPK program, they enter school ready to go. And those students take off with their learning. Students who don't attend some type of preschool typically are going to struggle pretty dramatically in the beginning of school, because you can imagine what a student who understands and knows of the expectations of school walking into kindergarten versus someone who's never even maybe left a, a household or maybe their neighborhood. It's a, it's a vast difference. And so these programs really do help students enter where they need to be and excel. So we want to keep working to expand those programs as much as possible. We're also working on aligning the programs with the district. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about those next steps very briefly here, but right now we're focused on literacy as a district. That's part of our strategic plan as well. And currently, we've introduced the Hagerty Phonemic Awareness Program at the UPK level. So this summer and fall, the teachers at UPK are going to be trained on this program. And that'll be implemented in January of the school year. That's in alignment with our kindergarten through second grade program. And this really focuses on listening to those, those letter, those sounds that are in, in words and in letters and preparing them for kindergarten. So it gives them that, that entry level step ready for kindergarten. Next, this coming school year, we're going to be researching different programs and curriculums that are available. Right now, the programs are doing a couple of different curriculums or programs. We're going to be working to align that for, for fall of 2023. So we're going to research what's, research what's out there. Hopefully adopt that this coming spring and then it'll be aligned then to our district. And then, of course, we're going to continually advocate for additional UPK funding. So we continue to increase UPK enrollment, because that is a great thing for our students. And then down the road, we'll be looking at how do we align math in our SEL, our social emotional learning programs? So that students are coming in, they're not getting a completely different experience in their UPK program. It'll, it'll line up well in a developmentally appropriate manner. So are there any questions regarding UPK?
It does not have to deal with you as a leader. First of all, it looks like, thank you for increasing the enrollment. It looks like about 50% now. We're up to 50% of our children getting UPK. I think this, and, and you know, usually we have Learn As You Grow here and usually we have Northminster. Am I correct that they hire their teachers for the program? They're not part of it. I think, I know we're a large school district. But down the road, I hope in my lifetime that the UPK program is in our school district and are physically in our school district. I believe it is an ESM. Am I correct? Am I wrong?
ESM has their own school district, their own employees.
Right.
And they also have some different funding for, for Park Hill. The, what we're trying to do is maximize the number of students
Right.
that we can get in. So depending on the hiring, it, it changes the number of students that we can get into.
And I do realize we're the largest enrollment school district and the cost of this. But I know Anadaga Central does it also because Matt Irwin's wife is part of that program and, and they do that. I just, that's my own personal thing is that hopefully someday this is part of our program, UPK through 12th grade. That's just my opinion. That's all I wanted to say. Nothing to do with what you're presenting.
Can I say two?
I had a quick question. So for hypothetically speaking, so somebody gets waitlisted, do we give the parents alternate like routes or like, like I'm not, I'm still new at this. So like if, if I'm a parent and my kid gets waitlisted and they're not able to get into the UPK, do we provide them information like alternate routes to preschool and that foundational building?
Yes, so absolutely. There, there's, we can, we're able to provide information on other programs. The other thing is depending on your waitlist number, there, there's many times across the summer where someone will move out of the district. And so if you're on that waitlist, you'll bump up. In fact, that's happened several times now where those lists are shrinking and we're kind of, we're getting more students in. We're also going to work on finding ways to maximize every single seat to make sure that we're filling as many seats as possible. But yes, definitely. We, we, we share information about other programs too. Yep.
Oh, my original question was, do they, if they win the lottery, do they get to pick what building they're in? Or is it just?
No, it's based, it's based on where your, where your house is in relation to the school.
Okay.
Yeah, there's kind of pre-lined, predetermined areas.
Okay. And then Bob made me think with his comment, are the teachers, like certified teachers?
Yes, they're all certified teachers to teach that level. I've got to say, the, the programs do an excellent job of, of hiring and retaining. There are some teachers there with 20 plus years' experience. Great programs. And now that we're aligning curriculum, that's just going to help enhance these programs. But yeah, absolutely.
I had a quick question. Should the program expand, say at the Rocks campus where I know they only have two classrooms dedicated? My understanding is that they really couldn't dedicate much more than that. Do we have any alternatives for how we could still fit an expanded program in there in the coming years?
Yeah, I don't think anything's ever off the table. And the one thing I can tell you about elementary schools, they, they will be full and we can get very creative with things. Right now, we had a hard time, actually it was just maybe a, a week ago that we actually finally filled that program. So right now there's, we're not seeing a high demand, a higher demand than what we can meet at that, in that level, but certainly as it expands and maybe as we can get more word out to that community. We'll have to keep revisiting that every single year. All right, I will shift gears to my next topic. All right, we're shifting gears now to academic intervention services. And I have on here that little triangle on the bottom to remind us and kind of anchor us. So remember what we're talking about now is the, the students who are in that yellow and that red. So again, we normally want to have 80% of our students that are responding to our regular tier one instruction. Maybe 10 to 15% that are struggling, that are getting some academic intervention services, that would be in the yellow. And then 5% or less is what we're hoping for, that are receiving intensive remediation from academic intervention services. So you want to keep that kind of 80, 15, five in your head as, as we go through the presentation. This area focuses on our strategic plan objective of ensuring that we implement a multi-tiered system of support framework that encompasses academic, behavioral and social emotional support for all. Tonight, we're talking about the academic piece of this triangle. This is really a three-sided triangle of those three areas. So over the last few years, we, we've done a tremendous amount of work in order to support this objective of the strategic plan. We have implemented a new universal screening tool, Ames Web Plus. You've seen data from that. You've heard a lot about that. But I'd like to point out a couple of things that we've been doing behind the scenes, and I'm not going to go into detail, but just show you a few examples. So an area that we've really focused on is making sure that our program is aligned to the needs of our students. So using Ames Web as well as other measures, we want to make sure that we're identifying, we're diagnosing a student who might be struggling in a certain area. And we're then giving them the appropriate tool to close that learning gap. And so this is just a, you don't have to look through it. It's just a visual example of now we're starting to work on what tools are we using to identify? What do those assessments look like? So if a student scores in a certain percentage, what kind of subtest do we give? And what intervention do we then prescribe in order to close that, that learning gap? This is ongoing work. And the point of this is that when we really target our interventions and we do it in the right manner where students are getting what they actually need, that academic gap should close and that green should grow in the triangle. And so we're starting to see the results of that now, and that should evolve over the next couple of years. The other thing we've spent a lot of time over the last three years is investing in our interventions and making sure we have good quality intervention. So here's another visual representation of what that looks like. So this is what we have now in our phonics intervention arsenal. So if you're an AIS teacher, a few years ago, you might've had about half of these at your fingertips. And these are actual programs in order to help students close that gap. We've expanded in all grade, grade levels in multiple different areas so that our teachers have the tools that they need in order to close those learning deficits of the students that they have in front of them. And again, this is just a visual representation of that work. This is ongoing work. We continually evaluate how our students are responding and we make adaptations across of the board to close those gaps further. A few other areas that we focused on over the last few years is we have increased our AIS staffing by 30% at the K-4 level. And that is specifically to address COVID learning deficits. And we use a lot of, we use some of the, the grant funding related to COVID in order to cover some of those areas. So that's been a specific to COVID. We've, we've invested in a significant amount of training for our AIS staff. All AIS teachers have gone through letters, which is language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. It is a very intensive literacy program that teaches our teachers about the brain research behind how students learn to read. And more importantly, what to do when a student is struggling. And so all of our AIS teachers have been through that or will go through it if they're new. We've also implemented at the elementary level trimester data meetings where our teachers sit down. They review their students' data and set individual goals for their each and every student they have in their classrooms. And so this helps us monitor how our students are responding. Moving forward, this year and last year, we've spent a significant amount of time adjusting our AIS staffing to the actual needs of our buildings. And so going back in the history of things, oftentimes we had AIS staff that were assigned to buildings based on enrollment. So if you had 600 students, you might've gotten two and a half teachers. But really it wasn't about the needs of students. So we've made sure that we use all of our assessment data to determine our staffing at the building. So one building could have five AIS staff if they're, if we've got a large percentage of students that are struggling learners. While another building may have two, but it's based around equity to ensure all of our students are getting the same level of service. This year, and it's on the board agenda for this evening, we'll be increasing, if you vote for that, we'll be increasing an AIS, an additional AIS teacher at Roxborough Road Elementary. And that comes directly out of some of that grant funding, again, in order to help one of our largest struggling schools. And we'll be also providing ongoing literacy and intervention training for our teachers. So of course we want to know, how are we doing? And I believe this question might've come up at one of the past presentations. And I'm, well, you know, before I get into that, I want to caution everyone around data because this is our first time through a full year of Ames Web data. We don't have historical data to reference. And so we don't want to make any major assumptions with this data. It's a great starting point for us to look at. We also have not been able to correlate it against New York State exams yet either, because we haven't gotten that data in. So over the next couple of years, you'll see this grow and we'll be able to refine and give you better predictions of how our students are doing and how our students are actually responding to New York State assessments. But for this school year, I'm going to show you right now, this is our K-4 literacy growth from fall to spring. So you're looking at in the light blue, each of the grade levels, how they, how our students performed on the universal screening tool Ames Web in the fall in light blue. And then the growth that they made in, in the dark blue. And what's important to point out here is this means that we're making, you can see across the board here, we're making tremendous growth at all levels in literacy. You're seeing big jumps there. It also, that test is progressive, meaning that if you took that as a kindergartner in the fall, it's, it's set at a kindergarten level for what should be expected in the fall. And then when you take it in the spring, it's set for where that student should be in the spring. So when you increase that, that means you're exceeding that first, that full year's worth of growth. Of concern, you can see our kindergartners are coming in below the 20th percentile, which means that less than 20% of our kindergarten students are ready for kindergarten. But you can see we're doing a good job this school year of closing some of those gaps and making some significant gains. And we'll know more historical across time.
Can you just mention how it's normed?
Yeah, so the, the, thank you. The, this is a nationally normed assessment, meaning we're comparing our students against millions of other students from across the country. And so by, by norming nationally, that gives us a really good understanding of how our students are performing. Not only against peers maybe in this county, but across the entire country with millions of students in the system. We've set our goals at the 60th percentile because it's closest representative of how students will perform on the New York State assessment, although we don't know that yet until we are actually able to compare the data. And again, what'll be interesting over the years is we'll be able to track the same cohort of students. So right now you're just seeing one snapshot. What'll be interesting next year is to see how the same students in first grade performed when they got to second grade. Did they maintain the same level of growth or did they not? Another thing to point out in here is you're looking at all the. Another thing to point out in here is you're looking at all the data from elementary, six elementary schools. We have the data broken down by school, by grade level. You can drill down all the way to individual students. The buildings are working with their own data in comparison. For tonight's presentation, I'm just giving you really, really big picture. Uh, in the board presentations this fall, you'll get much more detailed information.
Sure. Just a clarification question. What's the Y axis on this graph?
Which ones Y?
Up and down.
Oh, so this is, it's a great question. So this is the percentage of students that are in the green of that triangle, meaning that they're meeting the expectations at their, at their age level. Sure. I always forget X and Y. I'm not the math person. Okay. And really quickly, here's our math data. Interestingly, here you see significant growth in our kindergarten. Um, and, and we don't see as much growth in fourth grade. And again, we're not going to read too much into this yet, but this is now a starting point for us to start digging in a little bit more over the next couple of years. So some of the things we're going to be working on in AIS at the elementary level, we're going to continue to monitor the effectiveness of our interventions. And if needed, maybe add in more interventions, although right now it seems to be, we're doing a good job of closing those gaps. Um, we're going to continue professional training on Ames Web letters as well as those interventions that are in place. We are updating our AIS handbook. So it's reflective of all the new tools that we have in our, in our arsenal. And we are refining those trimester data meetings that are happening in the building with all teachers and all elementary schools to ensure that we're continually looking to, um, make sure that no student is falling between the cracks. And if they are, what are we going to do about it? Make sure we're responding collectively as a, as a school, as a grade level and as a district. Does anyone have any questions on AIS?
I have some questions on AIS. Thanks for all this information. A little bit overwhelming. I'm sure this took a lot of, you know.
I live it. So no, but I'm sure it is for anyone else. Yeah.
Um, so at one point you mentioned about, you know, buildings, which of course buildings having specific needs and is based on student need. But I, I mean, on, on thinking about AIS staff, couldn't it be broken down mathematically where let's say you have 500 kids in a building? You know that 80% of them aren't going to supposedly, if it was a perfect world, because of your curriculum and everything's going on there. It should be 80% is that number. So at the tier two, usually a teacher, that would be a teacher seeing a child for maybe two to three times a week. So you could look at their schedule of how many kids they could fit in. But when you get to tier three, that's usually the every single day that a student gets seen. And I, I guess my question is twofold. So I mean, mathematically, you could figure it out based on your math scores, based on your reading scores. And I know that sounds like, like a really neat package and too easy to, to do. Um, but then I, I guess when you get to the tier, the red level there, when the student is, um, making progress because they're doing that, how long do you sustain that for, before you say they need to move to special ed? What is the process there?
Okay. So, so we typically, if a student makes it into that tier three intervention for our district, that's a, a group of three or less, five days a week, using a, a scientific research-based intervention. So over time, we're then going to progress monitor that student every two weeks using Ames Web across a 10-week period and then see how that student is responding. Typically, if over those 10 weeks, let's say a student kind of flatlines or actually regresses, then what we would normally do is then try an additional intervention geared toward that student's deficit and do another 10 weeks to see how that student is responding. If the student is responding and making growth, then a determination would be, be made to either leave in tier three or possibly move down to tier two. So to answer your question, I think is it would be typically two 10-week periods of monitoring with two different, um, interventions. It's not always that clean, but that would be the ideal.
Okay. Then it just a, a final question on the letters training. Um, do classroom teachers actually have training in that as well? So they can support what, I mean, it's good. It's good information for every teacher to have, but do they have access? Is that also being given to them as well?
Yeah. So our, our priority was to get first of our, our reading teachers that, that training. And so that's what we've done over the last 12, 18 months. We have, don't quote me, I want to say four or five now teachers in the district that are certified trainers. And so we're expanding that out now to the general education. So we've had some opportunities for general education teachers this past school year and special ed teachers. And this upcoming school year, we hope to continually expand that. Really what it comes down to, it's a, it's a, it's huge investment in time and so finding the time. So a lot of it happens in the summer. We're hoping to run another cohort during the school year also, but we hope to keep expanding that across the next couple of years.
So it looked like a five-day training.
Yeah. It's basically equates to a five-day training. Yeah. And so we, we try to spread it out over five days or across the summer for a couple of weeks. It's, it's pretty intense.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Of course, you know me. Uh, first of all, thank you Greg for giving us the data at the end of the year. We always get the data when the buildings come at the beginning. And then if, if a, uh, staff comes in January. So thank you for the big picture and I hope that continues. When I, in my first life was, we called it PCN, not AIS, math person. How is a child let go of the program? So let's say you got a first grader that's in AIS. How do you determine if that kid is going to continue in the program? When I was doing it, it was very difficult to get out of the program. We didn't just say one year, you're in the program, the next year you aren't and so forth. How is that done in our district now?
That's, that's a very good question and it's always a difficult one. Um, but I would say we've got multiple layers now built in at the elementary level. So not only do we have our AIS teacher servicing the tier two and tier three, we also now have win back into the elementary schedule. So we have five days a week of a 30-minute intervention block for all students kindergarten through fourth grade. So now we have multiple layers to help catch students. So if a student were to qualify and was getting, let's say tier two AIS with an AIS teacher, they're responding pretty well. They're still a little bit below grade level, but what we use to kind of make that final call is we look at the whole grade levels as a whole. And if we say, all right, so the student who's getting AIS is now, um, performing better than some of our other students who are, who have regressed or are struggling more. We might now move that student down to a win block in intervention time, bring in some of those other students who are now popping up into AIS. And then we continue to monitor all those students. And so it really, it should be a very fluid system that's, that's very closely monitored. But that student who comes out of AIS now is not just dropped back into, to regular, just tier one instruction. They're still going to have a five-day a week intervention block, typically with, with one of the teachers from that grade level. So we've expanded this so much more so there. So now there's really like a tier one and a half in between those, uh, those tiers, which helps us make sure we're not losing one of those students we do pull out, um, as we're monitoring.
And, and you know, Beth had really, uh, a good thing there she brought out. We still have our resource program in, in our school district. In other words, it, it is special, I, I would say it's part of special ed program. So when I was a teacher, I had AIS students that went for either reading or math. And then if they're really in the red area, real, they would go to resource. We still have that, right?
So resource is now back in our special ed programming. It was not. And that, that, that's one of the things the special ed department has, has put back in place. So the, and what we try to do is we don't want to over-service a student where they're actually missing too much core instruction. Um, and so it's always a balance of seeing where does that student need the most support? But technically a student who receives IEP support with a special ed teacher would, it could, would and could also qualify for AIS and could receive both, unless it was not in the interest of that child.
The other thing is that with the math going up, I think we are starting to work with students in the lower grades, K through two in AIS math, which we never did before, because I felt back then when I was in my first life here, we didn't work with K through. And I always felt you need to start, just like reading, start early. Greg, do you feel, and this is just a personal question, that we overtest in this district? Uh, I, I've talked to teachers, I'll just say kindergarten at the end of the year, and they're great teachers. They said, Bob, I've got to give this test. I got to do it with each kid. Then I got to do this. Do you feel that we overtest? Or do you, it's a very difficult.
No, it is. But, uh, but I would say to answer the question, I don't think we necessarily overtest. I think that we don't do what we need to do with the data and we don't necessarily respond appropriately. And so by really focusing our time and energy and saying what components of the test are really critical, we certainly could trim some areas. But assessment is the most important thing we could do in instruction. We need to know where our students are before we start teaching. Um, and then what are we going to do about it when a student is struggling? So, so no, I think we need to be careful that we don't overtest. But I do think that if we do, if we do what we were supposed to do with the data and respond appropriately, it's the most, one of the most vital things we could do.
But it does take a lot.
It does take time. Yep.
Time for teachers. They do have substitutes that come in to let the other board members know, come in so that the kit, teachers can take the kids out and test them. It's a lot of time and a lot of energy. This I was going to bring up in our little round table, but I'm hoping we'll see the new data on the New York State testing, maybe in the fall or the end of the summer. I, um, and I, and again, we can't compare that, just like Greg said, can't compare it. We haven't really given it to the majority of our kids. And some kids took it and some didn't, but I would like to see that along with the New York State regions at the high school level down the road.
Yeah. The state is promising to have that, uh, soon. In fact, in our retreat, uh, this past week, we were told that it should be coming sometime in August. So, um, you never know, but stay tuned.
Kind of something what, uh, Nick gave to us last time, you know, where are we in the BOCES with ELA and where are we in the BOCES with math? Greg, nice job on this. And, um, I like what you said about data, because if you get the right data from the test, you can really improve your program.
Okay. I will move on because I know you're so excited for the next one. All right. We're going to shift gears one more time to now English Language Arts. So I'm presenting now on K12 English Language Arts. I'm going to talk about the strategic area here. The strategic, strategic plan area is that, uh, you can see goal two of our strategic plan is that all students will be proficient readers. It's a pretty clear statement. I'm going to very briefly tonight, just talk about K4, what we're doing in 58, and then what's going on in grades nine through 12. So right now we're focusing on kindergarten through fourth grade, as the board is aware and the community is aware. We've adopted Amplify CKLA as our core program and our core curriculum for K4. So we adopted that this past spring at a board meeting. Uh, all staff are being trained this summer. Right now I'd say we're probably about 60% of all of our staff trained and we have two more major trainings coming up in August where we should have very close to a hundred percent. We do have a plan in place for any teacher who is unable to attend, uh, in order to give them some, um, training prior to the start of school. Um, quick update on materials. Initially, we, we had planned on all materials being delivered before the end of the school year. However, uh, the supply chain and the driver shortage and shipping and that, that had some other plans for us. So I am happy to report that all of those materials have arrived here at the district office. I have to give, um, a shout out to Nicole Kulikowski, who almost single-handedly broke down almost 30 skids of materials, fully unpacked, inventoried, repacked them onto shipping crates or onto those, the skids and sent them over to the buildings. Um, she did that by hand and, and has been an incredible resource for the district. All of our buildings, they're in the buildings. Most of the materials are now in the classrooms. And if they're not, they'll be there in the next week. Um, but they'll be there well in time before, uh, teachers arrive and before students arrive. Um, looking at this fall, so important to point out that this program is a structured literacy program. It's backed in the science of reading, which means it's not just backed with one reading, uh, article that we read or a couple of studies. This is a huge body of evidence of the past 50 to 60 years around how our students or how children's brains work and how they learn to read. The program's steeped in that science. Um, some things to point out, the program has common assessments, which will drive exactly what, what to, to, uh, Bob's point of what do we do to intervene when a student is struggling? It's going to tell us that and give us interventions to help support our teachers and students. The program is a knowledge-based program, which levels the playing field for our struggling students in our higher poverty schools by teaching students how to read through, uh, literature and a knowledge-based curriculum. And it focuses on those foundational elements in K2. We also, as I mentioned earlier, we have, uh, win intervention blocks, five days a week at the elementary level to help support literacy. Our instructional coaches, thanks to the board, are in place in all of our buildings and they will be focused for the next couple of years on literacy and then shift to some other focus areas from the strategic plan. They'll be modeling lessons, working with teachers, finding out what's working, what's not, helping support our teachers and ensuring that the, the program goes well over the next couple of years. And then lastly, I'd like to say, to announce that we are working on a literacy academy for North Syracuse. And this is going to be a self-paced course that teachers can take at their own leisure for professional learning. Um, it is, it is a huge intensive amount of work to build this from the ground up. It's basically like a graduate course level as you complete it across time. Um, and we hope to be able to roll this out at K4 this fall and have that as an opportunity for learning. You can learn at your own pace. It's all online. Um, and then we're going to expand it for 58 and 912. Moving forward at the nine, or sorry, the 58 level. You can read that quote that's on the screen. Making sure we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum is one of the most important factors towards student achievement. So in order to do that, over the last couple of years in grades five through eight, we've researched what programs are available at grades five through eight. In this fall, we will be implementing or we'll be piloting two different programs into reading and EL education as the two pilot programs. Each will have about four months and we've got a nice cross-section of teachers at all grade levels for through grades five through eight. We'll be supporting them through the initial training from the company as well as ongoing training, um, through their PLCs. And we're going to be building grade level PLCs to support them. And there'll be an instructional coach, uh, from BOCES that'll be assisting at the middle school level.
Greg, this is going to be different than when you did K4 because the teachers are going to do all the programs?
Yeah, it's going to, they, they chose a different model of piloting. Um, that was up to them how they felt was best. Yep. It's a little bit different. Pros and cons to each. Um, and then next step, we will evaluate and adopt a program in this coming spring, training of next summer with implementation in fall of 2023. And again, that literacy academy I talked about as one of the next phases will be at this grades five through eight. And then finally, at grades nine through 12, we always want to start with that end in mind. And so on the screen, you can see that by June of 2026, that will be the first administration of the ELA Regents exam. That'll be aligned to the New York State Next Generation Learning Standards, which is a shift from Common Core. So that's kind of our guiding anchor of how we want to backwards plan. So over the next three years, we will transition grades nine through 12 to the Next Generation Learning Standards. We'll define our essential standards. We're going to align our, our assessment practices and our assessments at that level, which is going to be some new work for the group. Uh, we'll update the universal screening tool that's being used at the high school. And we're going to make sure we initiate high, uh, high-growth model of professional learning, uh, for our teachers at 912, because they haven't had much for the past 20 years. And that's been something expressed, um, that they're looking for to learn professionally, uh, from some high, um, professional learning. Are there any questions around English Language Arts?
That mean, I interpret this at the eighth grade cohort would be the first ones to take that ELA.
Yes. Eighth grade will be the first one taking it. Um, in that transition, we, we've been working on it for a few years, but now it's kind of the big push to get that finalized and everything documented.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you. We had plenty of questions. So I guess.
Yes.
We are going to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And again, just a clarification to the board. You saw Nick with math. You've seen Greg, ELA. We're going to continue with the other content areas so that we get them in front of you so that you can find out, uh, what initiative, what initiatives they have and where they're going and, uh, their next steps. So more to come.
Okay. Moving along, I believe we do not have comments from the audience because we had a person signed up, but was in the wrong school district. So we will move on to Board of Education committee reports, which you do not have committee reports, I don't believe, because we have not met yet. So I'll go to superintendent comments.
Okay. Thank you. Um, this past week, we had the opportunity to meet with the former commissioner, uh, Mary Ellen Elia. Um, and also two deputy commissioners, uh, just to talk about, uh, what's, what's happening in Albany. And one of the things that, uh, we did find is that Albany is trying to change their image and how they're working with school districts. And they're trying to be a lot more, uh, I'll say customer service. And, uh, they told us that we can email, call them directly. They want to hear from, from us. Um, if we have needs and, uh, or recommendations or suggestions. Um, so that was, that was a, a nice, uh, change of pace. Um, they are putting, uh, dollars into continued mental health services for, for districts. Um, looking to send out an RFP, uh, but that would have a local match. Um, so it was, uh, they're looking at, again, what districts can do about financial literacy. So they're looking at graduation measures and making sure that, uh, those are revised and, uh, looked at. And there's a time for a comment period. And they're also looking at, uh, bilingual education and, uh, the needs of districts, uh, for that. So that was one of the things we got out of, uh, Albany and, uh, some of the others, uh, we had some training, uh, today for restorative practice. Um, and another training will happen tomorrow. Uh, we have a, a few still openings, uh, for positions for staffing. But again, um, I think the last time when we were on the news, there were 31. Um, so, uh, we have under 20 at this time. And, uh, again, uh, looking at, uh, August 17th for the open house. August 17th for the open house at K W S Bear Road Elementary. Board to follow.
Okay, thank you. Board of Education comments. I'll just start with, I, I have a little note I'm going to pass around that was from the director math who presented to us the last board meeting. So I just wanted you all to read that. And other than that, are there other comments?
Just one. Unfortunately, the Gus Macer tournament for next week has been canceled. They haven't had enough teams sign up. So I know it's something a lot of the kids in our community look forward to, but not happening this year.
I do, if I could add to that with the canteen, that with the loss of that tournament is a huge loss of funding. And they are still accepting donation dollars. If you couldn't play or be involved or volunteer, any amount that you can help with a canteen would be appreciated.
Is there, is there a link to that? Or I could put that on just like some Facebook parent groups, you know, so people could more easily donate to that?
I would reach out to Amy Crowley and see what she's got going on for, for that too. Yeah, there should be a GoFundMe page or something.
Okay.
Other comments? Okay, we'll move on to routine action items. I'll look for a motion for the consideration approval of the minutes of the meeting of July 25th. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Crabtree. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, that is carried. Motion, please, for B and C, the classification and placement of disabled students for preschool and for home instruction. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Gru. That is before us, both B and C. Seeing no discussion, all in favor. Pose, that is carried. Thank you. If I get a motion for aid to create a 1.0 F T elementary teacher A I S Roxborough, motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. A is before us. And it's also F T E elementary teacher at Smith Road, excuse me.
Just would like to thank the administration for adding both positions, especially the one at Smith Road. And when each of us get the enrollment on Friday and also the class sizes, this is the best I've ever seen in my lifetime in North Syracuse for K through six. I can't say for the high school, but K through six. And thank you, administration, for all the time you've spent. I know, Chris, you do this a lot. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, A is before us, all in favor. Pose, that is carried. Item B, a motion, please create a point to F T speech therapist, point to full time equivalent physical therapist at Syracuse Early Education Program. Motion from Mr. Herman, second from Ms. Kruger. That is before us. Seeing no comments, all in favor. Pose, and that is carried. And C, request approved district comprehensive improvement plan. Should we have attached a motion, put that before us? Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Okay, that is before us. Any question? Comments? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, and that is carried. D, we have to pass a resolution to establish a tax rate for the three towns. This is a roll call vote. If we could have a motion, put that before us. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Ms. Gru. Okay, that is before us. Any discussion? Comments?
And Don spends a lot of time on this. It's pretty tough the utilization. So yes, we, we, put that what we think it is, the towns are the ones that.
Okay, go ahead with the roll call. Clerk? Aye?
Aye.
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 Right, that motion is carried. At the end of the meeting, we have, all board members have to sign the documents here about those warrants. So I will get that around at the, at closure. I'm calling those warrants. They are not warrants establishing the tax. There, here's authorization of warrants. If I get a motion, place that before us. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. That is before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, that is carried. Tax collection deposit agreement. Motion place that before us, please. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, and that is carried. G, declaration emergency regarding North Syracuse Junior High School air conditioning. Motion place that before us. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Thorne. That is before us. There's an explanation in the Friday letter. This needs to be a roll call vote. And if you have any questions, we can discuss that now. My understanding is that be due to the supply chain issues to get this moving along, it's required that we consider this an emergency so we can move along forward. That accurate, Mr. Keegan? Yeah. So if there are no questions, we will proceed with the roll call vote. Aye?
Aye.
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 Hey, that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Meal prices for 2022, 23, a motion to place that before us, please. Motion from Mr. Merzio, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion there?
I think Don and, and especially Wendy for all the work they've done on this. And I'm just disappointed in our United States federal government not continuing this on. I, I, they still got a few weeks, right, in session? I've contacted Senator Joldebrand and also Senator Schumer and told them for their office how I felt about this. Yes, certain campuses like the Roxborough campus and Smith Road and our main street won't have to pay. But what's going to happen to us people is just what happened before COVID. Many of our parents refused to pay, then can. Not the ones that can, the ones that can. And it goes up into the, I've talked to food service people. People owe thousands of dollars singly and they refuse to pay. And we can't do anything about it. So I feel bad about this and I'm going to pray that something's going to happen before school starts, but I support this. And thank you to all the people in our food service. You know, the pay is not the greatest and you, we're going to be approving a lot more of them tonight. God bless this committee and this group of people.
I have to say the same, just to reiterate what you said. The fact that it wasn't continued, the funding for all meals for all children is disheartening. Kids can't focus, they can't concentrate, and this is a stress that they don't need. And I'm hoping a grant or something can be afforded so that we can go back to kids not having to worry about being judged. And I know that we say that we don't, but the kids are smart. They know who's who. And I'm really hoping something can be done.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor. Pose, that is carried. We have declaration of marketable, marketable and non-marketable surplus. We need to place that before us. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion other than every single one was typed? Thank you. All in favor? Pose, carried. Acknowledged retirements. We have three that will be in our personnel reports coming shortly. Linda Ryan, licensed practical nurse retiring with 19.8 years of service. Diane Scopura, school counselor retiring with 26.4 years of service. And Lori Perleoni, special education teacher with 36 years of service. That's a lot of service that we have in these three tonight. And I wish them a healthy and long retirement. Knowledge limited gifts, a motion, please place that before us. Motion from Mr. Merzio, second from Mr. Crabtree. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, and that is carried. And I'll look for a motion to place instructional personnel report A before us for acceptance. Motion Ms. Kruger, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, that is carried. Motion B to support staff, place, motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Gru. B is before us. All in favor. Pose, and that is carried. And most administrative personnel report C, motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Ms. Kruger. And, yep. Thank you. Seeing no other comments, all in favor. Pose, that is carried. Thank you. And I'm going to make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment record of one individual, no action to follow and to review one legal item with no action to follow. If I can get a second, second from Mr. Merzio. All in favor. Pose, that is carried. And a motion for adjournment, please. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, we are adjourned.